On July 2020, Governor Baker signed into law legislation entitled, "An Act to Mitigate Arbovirus in the Commonwealth." Mass General Law, Chapter 252, Section 2A, which requires that the Executive Office of Energy and Environment, oh, this is for the mosquito.
Yeah.
I'm reading the wrong one. All right, this is the real one. Pursuant to the Governor Baker's March 12th, 2020 order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, Mass General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 18, and the Governor's March 15th, 2020 order imposing strict limitations on the number of people that may gather in one place. This meeting of the Hubbardston Select Board will be conducted via remote participation to the greatest extent possible. Specific information and the general guidelines for remote participation by members of the public and/or parties with a right and/or requirement to attend this meeting can be found on the town website. Though in-person attendance of members of the public will be permitted, but every effort will be made to assure that the public can adequately access the proceedings in real time via Zoom, and in the event that we are unable to do so, despite best efforts, we will post on the town's website a comprehensive record of proceedings after this meeting.
Okay, thank you. So before we proceed any further, so we have a 6:30 public hearing listed, which is something I would read and we would open, but we also have open session. So I just wanted to procedurally, you know, I'd like to get to open session if we could. We do have a scheduled item there to get them in and not having to stay any longer than necessary, unless they wanted to. Should I go straight to open session, do you think? Or should I open the public hearing and then just go to open session? What do you think is the best way to do that?
You're asking.
Yeah.
Legally, it's the chair's choice.
All right, sounds good. So we're gonna, since we did post the public hearing to be at 6:30, it can be a little bit after that, it will, but I'm gonna go to open session right now as we typically start off. So we have an item listed in open session, then we'll go to see if there are any items not listed. And the first is the presentation of the Vietnam Memorial Temporary Sign, and we've got Bill Shea. So can we make Bill a, you know, is he talking permitted and a panelist? All right, Bill, are you able to unmute and speak to us? If you are speaking, we can't hear you. I still see that you are muted.
Okay, how about now?
There you are.
Okay. Excellent. Shall I begin?
Yes, please. Thank you for coming.
Thank you for inviting me. Let me give you a quick synopsis of what's happened since we last met. First of all, a big thank you to the Select Board and the Town Administrator for rapid response regarding the approval of the concept of the Vietnam Veterans Memorial, which we put to full utilization when we submitted the grant. Unfortunately, we did not receive the grant. It is the Veterans Heritage Grant Program that informed us that they had an unprecedented amount of applications amounting to $515,000, which is more than double what they were allotted by the legislature. So it had nothing to do with our, the importance of our program. Their priority is not construction, it's renovation and fixing up existing memorials. So in one regard, we weren't on the primary list, but I felt that we gave it a good try, and we have every intention of going ahead with our goals and our dates, and so we shall not be deterred. The second thing is I've had interactions with Kelly, our town accountant, with prospects of putting together a GoFundMe. She did due diligence and checked with Department of Revenue, Legal Services, and that's also a no-go. So we cannot utilize any kind of a program such as a GoFundMe, which is too bad because we thought that that would be a definite incentive for lots of people from different areas to become involved. But under the circumstances, we have no footing for that. We thought about doing a Friends of Vietnam Veterans Memorial, but that would be a nonprofit, 501(c)(3), and definitely too complicated for our important project, but not gonna go there. But we will persevere, and we have plenty of good ideas regarding raising money. And we're about a week to 10 days away from a comprehensive Facebook page, which will serve multiple purposes in terms of putting a project out to let people know about it, to properly identify and screen all those veterans who are eligible to be included on the memorial. And so we're off to a good start. I have a very strong committee, definitely dedicated, and we'll be meeting again within a week to 10 days. And as I promised you before, I will keep the Select Board informed of what's going on. So this is, I am glad that Erin, in very short notice, was able to get this to you. I would like to see the sign three by five feet, if that is in accordance with the bylaws. I did read into that and thought that that was properly covered by the guidelines. We thought about doing a silhouette of the famous statue of the three Vietnam soldiers, but felt that we were better off with something for a drive-by, so to speak, which had that lettering and, of course, the important colors for the Vietnam Service Medal, which would be certainly identifiable to all people from that timeframe and would be a source of inquiry for others. So what I'm asking for this evening is for you to take a look at that wording. That's exactly what we had in mind, and to give us the okay. The sign will be made of durable wood. It'll be attached to the ground with two metal or wooden stakes, which will not be that deep, but will certainly make it a durable sign for the approximate location of where we'd like to place the memorial. So I'm putting that out to you and looking for your feedback and acknowledgement.
Okay, thank you. A couple of questions, I guess. First is, thank you for all the detail and answering most of those questions on the specifics of the sign. How often do the, does the funding source allow you, is it annual?
Yes, it is. Once a year, and the next deadline will be April of next year. And in my discussions with the committee, we want to go forward. This should be sooner than later, and we feel very confident that we'll be able to raise what we believe will be approximately $30,000 to do justice to a memorial, which would be something of a similar design to what is already on the common. And obviously, you folks will be made aware of the design before we go ahead any further.
Okay, so I mean, thank you for, you know, your early fervor into this without a doubt throughout the course of the committee, but it probably makes sense because who knows what's gonna happen as we consider this, to do it on an annual basis as well, just in case, right? If you guys aren't around for some reason, or, you know, this thing wouldn't necessarily be up in perpetuity as far as a temporary sign, again, just, you know, as far as procedure anyway. So would you have any issue if we considered it in that fashion and, you know, that sort?
In other words, it being temporary, of course, it would be temporary until we were prepared to put the permanent memorial. And so theoretically, the only perpetuity that I would ask for is one year until May of next year, which is the goal that we set for having the memorial in place. So I'd be looking for, if it's a permit or the okay for a one-year timeframe through the end of May of 2022.
Yeah, okay. Okay, anyone have any more questions for Bill?
Yeah, hey, Bill, how much money are you looking to raise?
$30,000, and we believe that is attainable. We're going to do a number of different programs, and Sarah Wyman, our Veteran Service Officer, has access to a huge mailing list, and in order to reach out to our veteran population and determine who would be on the memorial, she's also gonna put a little something in there. If you'd like to make a donation, the details for that would be on that letter and also on our Facebook page. And Kelly has provided me with the succinct details how we go about collecting donations to make sure that it follows the rules according to Hoyle.
Okay, so hey, you know, it's a number of months until, you know, we're right up against town meeting, the annual town meeting, but they're almost always, every time I, you know, every year I've been on the board, I'm sure just about every year, there's a special town meeting sometime in the later fall. I guess you should consider, depending upon how things are going by then, whether or not you, you know, your committee would consider a warrant article for some sort of ballots, right? So if you sort of almost get there, or you're some percentage there, and it might be a good idea to sort of come back to us and say, hey, we need X amount more, should we put a, or can we, or we're gonna put a warrant article out there from some funding source within the town to be able to finish the job.
That's a great idea. Thank you very much.
Okay, anything, any additional questions for Bill? No? All right, well, if we want to act on this, I guess the, it's been, you know, it sounds like the request and motion would be to approve the sign as presented for, you know, one year, probably through May 31st, 2022.
I'll make that motion, Dan.
I'll second it.
Okay, that's seconded. Any discussion, further discussion? Okay, seeing none, we'll vote, roll call. Dan, yes? Jeff?
Yes.
Katie?
Yes.
Pat?
Yes.
And Chris?
Yes.
Okay, unanimous.
Thank you very much.
All right, Bill, thanks again. Good luck.
You bet. We'll stay in touch. Thank you very much.
Sounds good. All right, we're still in open session. Want to see if anybody else is interested in joining for open session now before we go to the hearing. There'll be opportunities later on as well, but does anybody else want to raise their hand? Who is a participant, or Erin, or David, has anyone else let you know they want to be part of open session?
I don't have anybody.
I do not have anyone either.
All right, sounds good. So we will move on. So we are at the public hearing now for the Board of Health with the Select Board. So do we have a, are we looking for a quorum from the Board of Health tonight, David?
They did not post, I don't think.
Okay.
So I think we have representatives.
Yep.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure. So it says with the Select, on Board of Health, with the Select Board. So, okay, so operationally, I, you know, I think we're fine. So I'm in opening the public hearing, I will read it. The mosquito, municipal mosquito spraying. In July 2020, Governor Baker signed into law legislation entitled "An Act to Mitigate Arbovirus" in the Commonwealth MGL, Chapter 252, Section 2A, which requires the Executive Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs, the EEA, to develop a process for the State Reclamation and Mosquito Control Board, SRMCB, to permit municipalities to opt out of mosquito spraying, including aerial and other, conducted by the SRMCB. And then what it says after that, so that's the public hearing notice. Discussion from the Board of Health on the benefits of risks related to and health impact of mosquito spraying. So is there, you know, someone from the Board of Health who wants to start this off? That's, that's, that's here?
Yep, Dan, my name's Kate. I'm here from the Board of Health. I'm the acting chair in place of Kathy Handgate. And we put together this letter after a discussion amongst the board regarding mosquito spraying. Ultimately, I don't know if you want me to read it aloud, or if you would just like me to summarize it, but ultimately, what we'd like to see done is no aerial spraying, and if we're going to do spraying, do targeted spraying by truck rather than aerial spray.
Okay, so as far as the targeted aerial spraying, what determines whether that's the area of target?
No, so by truck. So we actually wouldn't like, would not like to see aerial spraying done at all because while they do use mapping to limit impacts on larger bodies of water, the fact that we have so many areas of water that are runoff swamp-like, you know, run into tributaries and into aquifers, there isn't really a distinct way to distinguish where they spray. And the biggest issue that the board has is the fact that, while the state does say that, you know, Anvil 1010, which is a product they use in aerial spraying, is safe, which it is to a certain extent, it also contains PFAs. And PFAs are contained in both the preservatives used and also in the barrels that Anvil is stored in. So leeches into the product itself, and PFAs are basically a carbon atom that's bound with a fluorine molecule, and because of that, it's very dense, and it's very difficult to break down. So it doesn't break down in the environment. PFAs are actually known carcinogens that cause long-term risks that are greater, we think, in our assessment, than the threat of triple A. And to give you a sense of that, there's been 110 cases of triple A in the state since 1938. In 2019, there were 12 cases and six deaths in the state. In year-to-date 2021, there have been 12,540 deaths due to cancer. So when weighing the risks, we just don't see the benefit. There are things, precautions people can take in terms of when they're outside using, you know, personal pesticides, you know, on their person, you know, spraying around their property if they choose to do so. But aerial spraying targets the community and spreads carcinogens far and wide into a water system that, you know, we have neighbors in Templeton. Templeton has elevated levels of PFAs in their water supply. And, you know, we just don't want to see Hubbardston go that way.
Yeah, so are you recommending that we have no treatment done at all? Because you, I'm a little confused when you mentioned earlier by truck as opposed to aerial. Are you advocating our spraying, but from a truck point of view? Are you advocating that we do none of it?
We are advocating that we do any, that we do it by truck, if at all, at targeting specific areas where there's, you know, lots of low-lying water, you know, or, you know, stagnant water, but not a widespread aerial spray. The state, in that letter, they actually state that they want an alternative plan. So it's not that we can just opt out, we have to prepare what our alternative plan would be. And our alternative plan would be spraying targeted areas by truck, and then potentially, if there are areas where there's higher risk and there are wetlands that aren't accessible by roadway, finding, you know, the means to basically spread hay or some other organic material to deter the growth of mosquitoes.
What or who would be determining the targeted areas and on what basis?
The Mosquito Control Board has maps of areas that are higher risk, and we would actually defer to them on that in terms of areas that are accessible by roadway that meet that requirement.
Yeah, so.
Thank you.
I mean, I agree with this. PFAS, we call it PFAS in our environmental industry, and they are, it's an emerging contaminant. It's in so many different things. I've been to a number of, you know, DEP-sponsored public listening sessions for water and other sorts of things that people just don't really understand yet. So it feels like this is, this is a, you know, conservative and responsible action specifically because it's so early on in knowing what this contaminant does and is. So, you know, I, you know, I don't, I don't have anything else to add but that. So.
Is there any cost to the town associated with spraying?
As outlined by the Mosquito Control Board, I don't believe so.
And why can't we opt out from any spraying?
We can. We can opt out of all of it. They just also asked that we put together a plan or an alternative plan for management, and the board felt that, you know, certain areas that were very high risk, we would, we would be fine with very limited spraying on the ground. Aerial spraying in the mass is just a little bit too risky.
So is there a different, is there a different product used for ground spraying as opposed to aerial spraying?
There is not. It just limits the amount of pollutants that you're putting into the environment to a very specific targeted area rather than literally crop dusting the entire town.
Why not eliminate truck spraying also, or ground spraying?
We would be fine with that.
Okay.
All right, so what action, so you've come to us with a letter here, and so the next step is what for us?
I believe a response to the Mosquito Control Board based on, you know, whether you want to eliminate it completely or if you choose to go the kind of middle-of-the-road approach that the board has recommended. And that goes back to the Mosquito Control Board, and then I believe next steps are taken by them to figure out, you know, what and if we're on any type of a spraying schedule.
What did we do last year?
I don't know that there was spraying last year. I don't honestly recall. I'd have to look in the records.
Well, I'll make a motion that the town eliminate any and all mosquito spraying this year, 2021.
I will second that.
Okay, it is seconded, so discussion. So I just want to sort of bring up. So, you know, we have a recommendation from the Board of Health. To me, you know, they know more than I do on this stuff, and it does state that targeted spraying would be, you know, possible. I don't know all the reasons why. I just, I hate to close the door completely if for some reason we need to do it that way, and then we've acted and said, absolutely not. I don't even know what scenario that would be, but I am a little hesitant to just sort of go 100% against that. So, anyway, just saying it. We're in discussion here. Anybody else have anything they want to discuss? In a second.
I lean that same way, Dan, as you just explained it. I'm not comfortable with doing it, totally, totally not doing it at all.
Okay, still with this discussion. Go ahead, Katie.
I feel that enough people spray their yards. Personally, I don't like any kind of spraying done, but I know a lot of people that do, and that's fine with them. I'm not saying anything negative about that. I just, the more contaminants we're spraying between people's yards and then the town spraying and all this other crap, it does add up. So that's my concern is now if the town starts, even if it is in located areas, it's still building up. There's a lot of people in the area that already spray their yards. So I just feel like it's one less thing that we can, I just, I'm all set with spraying pesticides all over. I just, I really am. I don't want anything to do with it. I'm looking at the long-term effects of what's gonna be in our drinking water in 20 years. What the hell are my kids', kids', my grandkids gonna be drinking in this town if we start spraying everything? You know, it's, it doesn't go away.
I hear you, and I can't disagree with that either. I just don't understand, you know, all scenarios. And if there's some, like, critical location that there's some outbreak because of reasons we have no idea, and we've sort of closed the door on it, that makes me, I just don't know enough about it, you know? I just, I really just don't know enough about it to really know whether that's a good idea or not.
Well, this is a one-year plan, correct? So we're not actually closing the door. We're just closing the door for this year.
Yeah, no, I know. So that is definitely, Chris was very clear in his 2021 on that, on that motion, so yep.
And of course, if there's extenuating circumstances that we can anticipate, you know, we'll revisit the situation.
Right, as long as we can. I guess we can, right? I guess we can.
I believe the Mosquito Control Board can be contacted if there was an outbreak or there was a test that showed the presence of triple A at any point. I can, I can double-check on that and report back to this board if you choose.
I, yeah, I hate to make a big deal of this, but I feel, I agree with you, Katie and Chris. I think it's a huge deal. So I would just like to know a little bit more, I think. Would you mind doing that, Kate?
No, I don't mind at all.
That doesn't restrict anybody from continuing on with discussion and voting. I'm just, you know, that is something Kate has just agreed to sort of get us some additional information on that. Does that change a motion on this, or is the motion still stand?
Doesn't change.
What's the additional information you're looking for, Dan, specifically?
Just whether, to making sure if there is some sort of situation that we can contact the board, the mosquito board, and say, hey, we voted as such and such, but, you know, we have a problem. Can we change that somehow? Can you still come? You know, that's all I wanted to, she was gonna look into to make sure that we could still contact them.
I'll keep my motion as presented.
Okay, motion is still presented, and the second is presented. We're still in discussions. Anyone have any further thing they want to discuss? Okay, seeing none, we will vote on Chris's motion and Katie's second. So we'll call, roll call. Dan, no? Jeff?
No.
Chris?
Yes.
Katie?
Yes.
Pat?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries, and thanks, Kate, for presenting it to us like that. And I guess if you need anything further from us, please let us know.
Very good. Thank you.
All right. All righty, so that is the only item I believe we have for the public hearing. So David, I'm gonna close the public hearing in a second. I haven't just closed it yet, but I'm gonna close it in a second unless you have any reason why I have to leave it open. All right, sounds good. We will then close the public hearing. Board of Health with Select Board for the Municipal Mosquito Spraying. Thanks, everybody. All right, moving on. We're on Roman numeral two, general consent. We have an appointment for the Board of Registars. We have Dennis O'Donnell, who we think we all know if we, if we have been around a bit. So there is on the agenda potential action and motion for that.
I'll make the motion that the Select Board moves to appoint Dennis O'Donnell to the Board of Registars beginning 1 April 2021, as presented in general consent.
I'll second that.
That is seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, we'll vote, roll call. Dan, yes? Jeff?
Yes.
Chris? Katie?
Yes.
And Pat?
Yes.
Okay, unanimous. Next item has to do with the minutes from April 12th, 2021. I saw Erin practicing calling them up. I hope she's laughing when I said that. I think they're right down the middle, bottom middle of the screen. I don't know why that's funny, but, so anyway, we were all there. Okay.
I'll make a motion to the Select Board moves to approve the 12th, 2021 Board Meeting Minute Meet as presented in general consent.
I'll second that.
Okay, it's seconded by Katie. Any discussion? Seeing none, we'll vote, roll call. Dan, yes? Katie?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
And Pat?
I'm gonna have to stay because I left the meeting early.
All right, sounds good. So we have four yeses and abstentions. Alright, sounds good. So we have four yeses and abstention. Um, moving on, item three, uh, Roman numeral three, we have announcements. Um, Katie, where we stand with your stuff?
Oh, we got lots of good stuff. So the bottling can drive uh ended up happening on the April the seventeenth. Even though we had a whole bunch of snow, the Girl Scouts were out there sorting an ungodly amount of cans that were dropped off. Um, two hours past the drop-off time, but they did good and they got it all done. Um, the, the keep Hubbardston Beautiful though has been postponed to this Saturday because it's kind of hard to pick up trash with, you know, four or five inches of snow outside. So Laura did manage to move that one to again this Saturday, eight to noon. You can go down to the rec field and um there will be the dumpsters down there and Laura will have trash bags and I think some swag or something. But anyway, that will be this Saturday. Um, this past Saturday, the spring fling happened down at Plainview. There was a whole bunch of different businesses out there and everyone did well and everyone had a good time. Um, and then there was also a walk that I did not go on um at Lombard Road because I was at the spring fling. Um, that I guess went very well according to Susan from Open Space and they are having another one on May twenty-second. So if you're looking for information on that or to see the property, um, that's the date, May twenty-second with a rain day of the twenty-third at one P M at Lombard Road and uh Open Space can answer a bunch of questions. Now, coming up, we do have the Hubbardston Fair, which supplies should be going out anytime now up onto the poles along with the American flags. Um, because we do it all at the same time, just to put less pressure on uh
Greens?
Like people, yes, yeah, all done at once, you know? But anyway, the Hubbardston Fair again is June twelfth and still taking applications to the first um of, of June. Uh, the day, the, the time is nine to two with a rain day of the thirteenth. We have a good list going of all different kinds of um artists and crafters and direct sales and small businesses. Bands, we got a few acts going and I got a bunch of different food trucks. So it's one of those, bring a camp chair or a blanket, come park. You know, spend the day with us. You can, you know, catch the different activities going on, listen to music, get something to eat. It'll be a good day and it'll be outside. And it will just be something to do and you can see other people and it'll be lovely, you know, just to be able to see other people and interact. Um, so yeah, so we have that and then the dingy dash again, August twenty-eighth, start thinking about your boats because that takes a little while to build out of cardboard and duct tape. And then we also have field day on September eighteenth with a rain date the nineteenth from nine to three. So we got some stuff coming up. Um, we're working on it and it's, it's all coming together rather nicely. So now we just have to hope for no rain on any of those dates.
Have you had rain at the dingy, dingy dash yet that it rained once?
Yeah, last, last year we posted one day because it was just, it would have been miserable. You know, it's like, that's no fun. Um, so we
Boats would melt too, right? Some boats would might melt.
No, they ain't come. You kidding? Some of the boats have been used like two, three years now in a row. It's the same damn boat. They just keep coming back. So you'd be surprised how well duct tape will hold out water.
Alright, well, it sounds good. Thanks for that. Anyone else have anything to add for announcements? Nope. Okay, moving on. Uh, so we're at news business. Uh, the first one um is uh zero one seven, which is the animal cu- control officer truck. So so David, can you give us a little history on this? I know we talked about it briefly last week.
So um we received out from the city of Gardner a uh information that they had uh purchased uh two trucks for the animal control service. Uh, and according to the intermunicipal agreement between Hubbardston and Gardner, uh, we have to uh pay a portion of those costs based upon population. That uh number is um uh eight thousand one hundred and fifteen dollars for that assessment, which we should put onto the uh annual time meeting warrant so that we can continue to uh enjoy that service. So the first thing is, is that uh we're, we're obliged to pay for this. Uh, the second thing is that the, the warrant is closed, so the select board will have to reopen the warrant, accept this article and then close the uh, the warrant again. Um, I actually do have about eight thousand dollars lying around surplus, so we cannot afford this.
Yeah, so what you're talking about, this was um surprise, right? I, we've never, I've never seen one come before. Um, there's, the, I don't know how much digging you did into it or whether there's any notification beyond just the bill uh that they sent to us, but feels like it, it just sort of popped up.
Yeah, certainly we're, everybody should be well aware that we're well into our budget season to get an eight thousand dollar bill out of the blue. Uh, it's not neighborly. Um, I did read the contract and we are obliged to cover the cost, but I think we need to uh get from the city of Gardner a five-year capital plan uh with respect to this service.
Yeah. Okay, well, we don't have much choice here. So um I guess our next action would be to, the, to vote or to make a motion and, and vote whether or not we want to reopen the warrant here.
So the, the motion is simply to uh basically all the town warrant, is that correct?
Yep.
Reopen the town warrant, add the change to the capital article and then reclose the warrant.
Do we want to, do you have that, that we can look at while if we do a motion, can, can you call that up?
Yeah, it's on um zero one seven. Potential motion.
The actual but the actual, do you have the article written?
Yes, I do.
Yeah, that's what I want to see if we can see here if we sort of combine it. Alright, I'll read it just because it's there. Article to see if the town will vote, raise appropriate transfer free cash or otherwise provide eight thousand one hundred and fifteen dollars to pay for capital costs associated with two trucks for animal control as the per- the provisions of an intermunicipal agreement with the city of Gardner or take any action that relative there to. Uh, okay, so, so now, okay, we've seen that. Um, Jeff, uh, if you were going to make that motion, um, it would be to open the uh reopen the warrant and then feels like we should do a couple of them here. I would say we do want to open the warrant and then the motion that's in front of us there to do that and then to close the warrant unless somebody disagrees.
Before we proceed, we do have a hand raised. If you could wait just one moment, I will bring up Kelly. She would like to say something.
Okay.
Let me just find her. Give me just a moment. Kelly, are you ready?
She's muted. Here we go.
Whenever you're ready, Kelly, we can now see you. Are you there, Kelly? We cannot hear you, but we can at least now see you. Still no sound. Try your bottom left-hand side and unmute.
If it's not too much, you could type in the chat as well.
Write a sign and hold it up. No, not now. Still nothing. Okay. Never mind is what she's saying.
Okay. I couldn't tell if she said never mind or we have no money. They kind of look like the same thing. I swear that's all.
She was going to say we could add to the fall town meeting. She's typing on the chat right now. If anyone else can see it.
I see that. I mean, I, I think if we can, if we can afford it, David sort of said we can, that maybe we're okay to, to do it now and, and not have to uh make the city of Gardner wait. I don't know what you guys think.
No, if we've got the money, we might as well get it out of the way.
Yeah, I appreciate the thought. Okay.
Can we get the article back on the screen so I can include that in the motion? Thank you. I'll make the motion and then the Select Board uh reopen the town warrant, adding the change to the capital article. Uh, we, we're going to do two uh motions, so I'll, I'll just leave it at that, that we open, reopen the town warrant to change the capital article. Then reclose it.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second.
Alright, that's seconded. Any discussion? Okay, we'll vote. Uh, Dan, yes. Katie?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Pat? Okay, the uh, the warrant is now open.
Okay, I'll make the next motion. I move that the town transfer from free cash eight thousand one hundred and fifteen dollars to pay for capital costs associated with two trucks for animal control per the vision of an intermunicipal agreement with the city of Gardner.
I'll second.
Okay, the seconded. Any discussion? Uh, seeing none, we'll vote. Uh, roll call, Dan, yes, Katie?
Yes.
Yeah?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Pat? Okay, it's unanimous and, okay, one more.
Make the motion then to uh close the town warrant.
I'll second that.
Okay, any discussion? No, uh, we'll vote, roll call, Dan, yes, Katie?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
And Pat?
Yes.
Alright, we got there. Uh, moving on, um, item uh zero one eight, which is discussion on the, the budget hearing. We, we got some, some information uh from, from David and Erin earlier. Is there anything you want to call up here, David, for us?
So as the budget is basically the same one that Ryan McLean uh offered to you back on March fifteenth. There are a couple of changes to his numbers that uh we needed to, to make. Uh, the first is that the library offset of about eight thousand dollars was um not accounted for. So I talked to the assessor and it looks like we can increase the new gross by eight thousand dollars to offset that cost. Um, in addition to the, something new is the uh excluded debt for the uh roof project coming up. Looks like towards the end of FY twenty-two, we're going to have to make a short-term interest payment of about six thousand dollars. So that is an expense, but it's also a revenue because it's excluded. So uh, that's an offset there. Um the police reform bill, the chief is uh advising us that we may want to increase the budget by twenty thousand dollars. We still need to look at that. Um, I would recommend that we study this a little bit more carefully and then be prepared of the fall town meeting to augment his budget if we have to. The, the police reform bill requires additional training above and beyond what's customarily done for police officers. And that's the, that's the uh, the cost that the chief advised me that the impact of the police reform bill will have on the town of Hubbardston. And then the Quabbin Regional School District assessment is the same as Ryan's numbers. So other than that, you have a bu- balanced budget. Total revenues of nine point seven two one million dollars and total expenses of nine, seven one, three million dollars, leaving you with a surplus of about eight thousand dollars, which you just uh handled with the Gardner sharp uh assessment.
Okay, I mean, we, this is thank you for outlining the changes, but we've, we've seen all this uh, seen all this before and we're getting towards town meeting here. So anyone have any questions? Alright, well, we'll entertain a motion then.
I'll make the motion, the Select Board move to approve the fiscal year twenty twenty-two budget as presented.
I'll second that.
Okay, it's seconded. Any discussion? Okay, uh, roll call, Dan, yes, Katie?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Pat?
Yes.
Okay, unanimous. Uh, moving on, we have the uh, the zero one nine, which is the municipal vulnerability plan. Um, this is, uh, again, has to do with David and, and some authorizations we would give him. So David, you want to go into this a little bit?
Yeah, so Ryan wants to uh have uh the town apply for municipal vulnerability action plan uh grant and um this requires documentation that the Select Board approves of the application. Last year, the uh town applied for a culvert replacement grant and did not receive it. And Ryan has determined and I agree that uh putting together a, a comprehensive culvert replacement plan is very similar to the capital plan. We'll put the uh town in good stead for future grant uh funding. So um, that's the, the proposal is that we apply for MVP money uh to do an assessment of uh your culverts in town.
Yeah, so the MVP, you remember, we did the MVP program. Um, we, we, a, a bunch of it last year. Uh, was on a few other calls with um engineers relative to sort of assessing the overall health when it comes to this stuff uh for the town of Hubbardston and we haven't, you know, spent any money on it uh specifically from the town and this just sounds like it's, it's uh more requests to uh, to get assistance financially. So um, that sounds, sounds like a good idea to me. So you need the authorization from us.
Right, those all ask for that as part of the documentation when we submit the grant application.
Okay. Okay, so there's a recommended motion on, on our agenda here.
Yep.
Alright, I'll, if you want, I'll make the motion. The Select, I move that the Select Board move to allow the acting town administrator to complete the grant application with T E C.
I'll second that.
Seconded, uh, any discussion? Seeing none, uh, we'll vote, roll call, Dan, yes, uh, Katie?
Yes.
Yeah?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
And Pat?
Yes.
Alright, is unanimous. We're on to zero two oh, which is the one-day pour permit from Moon Hill Brewing Company. Um, Katie, you want to chime in on this?
Yeah, so this is for the fair. Um, they were supposed to come last year but did not due to COVID. They did come the year before. Um, so this is not new. This is the kind of thing, uh, they'd be selling at the Hubbardston Fair only, no other spot. Um, all alcohol has to be um, you know, taken there. They can't leave the property with it. We'll have signs out. Um, they will bring cans this year because of COVID, so I will have a recycling bin out there just for them as well. Um, again, there'll be an extra police officers there mingling around just to make sure. But again, it's, all of this is, is just to kind of, you know, like if you're just chilling with your family, listening to the music and eating, you know, some tacos or burgers or whatever, fries, you know? You're just chilling. You, you can have a beer with your meal. It's not a binge drinking event. It's not major. No one does that. It's it's very like casual, you know, like almost like a restaurant kind of atmosphere. So uh, but you will be able to take it back to your, your blankets and chairs this year. We're not going to have a fenced-in area. Uh, Chiefy has allowed, we're going to let it go and see how it goes for
Okay. Sounds good to me.
I just want to note on this that um this would have to be wine and malt beverages only that Moon Hill Brewing Company creates themselves. They are allowed to have it out on display so it can be exposed. It doesn't need to be behind closed doors or in coolers or in a refrigerator. Um, it is a can. They would have to open it prior It is a can. They would have to open it prior to them walking away from the table. And it would have to be opened, served, and consumed while they are inside the fenced area of Curtis Field. And as Katie had said, the only thing that, that the police chief does require that there are no alcoholic beverage beyond this point signs, as well as some recycle bins.
Yeah, like going to a Sox game, do the same thing, open it for you. Like I can open my own. So be it. All right, well, there's a recommended motion on there if we're in favor of this.
I'd like, could I ask just a question? Other than what it, that they would be providing, how are we going to handle people bringing in can of beer themselves? Is that going to be allowed?
No. No, you have to buy it there.
Well, so what I thought, so my question to follow up is how are we going to secure that?
Well, we, years before, nobody brought in alcohol. On any of the other years that they were at alcohol there. And it's one of those things you just, it's the same with any event like this. If you go to a lot of the, the large-scale events, people don't bring their alcohol. They go there to buy it. You know what I mean? Like if you want a beer, you will go get it. If you don't want a beer, you will not go get it. People don't normally bring a beer to a town event. That's just, it just, it's, this doesn't go that way. So, so. But how else to say that?
No, no, that's fine. Just, just curious.
Okay.
You want to make the motion, Katie?
I can't. I can't even vote on this. I have to abstain.
Oh, okay, then I'll put forth a motion if you want. Are we ready for that, Dan?
Yep.
Okay, I'll make the motion. Select board move to approve the one-day wine and malt pour permit as discussed for Moon Hill Brewing Company for the date twelve June twenty twenty-one, rain date to be thirteen June twenty twenty-one.
I'll second that.
Okay, it's seconded. Is there any discussion? All right, we will vote. Roll call. Dan, yes. Katie?
Abstain.
Jeff?
Yes.
Yes.
Pat? Okay, four yeses and one abstention. Motion passes. Moving on to item zero two one, we have an update on two forty-eight Gardner Road. David? I don't know how much you want to go into this or how much you can go into this at this point.
Well, right now, we have a information from the property owner that cleanup is going to start. So let's skip over the side of and we'll work with the property owner and we'll report back for progress.
Okay, I, I just want to open up real quick just to see if anybody had, because it is on the agenda. So does anybody want to speak to this? Or are we okay as a group here to, I'm fine to pass it over, seeing that there is some progress on there? And we can readdress that at our next meeting. Anybody want to say anything to this? Are we good?
No.
Sounds good to me.
All right, so we'll pass it over. Sounds good. We'll throw it on the agenda for next time to make sure that we address it. Our next item is item zero two two, and it's discussion, the, the HDA with Royal Sun Farm LLC and sixty-nine Gardner Road. You want to bring Damon on for us, please?
Dan, I'm gonna recuse myself from this. Can you let me know when it's over?
I'll text you. All right, Damon, you are a panelist, so you can unmute and whenever you're ready.
Hi, everybody.
Hello?
Hi, could you hear me? Sorry.
We can hear you. It's a little bit faint, but we got you.
All right. Yeah, hi, no, I saw that I was on the agenda and I, I guess I don't know if you guys wanted, you know, anything from me in terms of, I guess, any more than I provided the email or, or what?
Okay, well, thanks for coming on. So, so David, can you, can you let us know where we stand with this? At this point and what is required of us at this point, and whether or not there's been any contact with council in addition to what has already happened or any other sort of updates you can give us?
Certainly, I'll just give a summary. March first, the select board signed with Mr. Schmidt a host community agreement for a grow facility. Later in March, Mr. Schmidt came back and asked for an amendment to the, the host community agreement, talking to council. There's no legal reason why we would want to reopen the negotiations. The one point that Mr. Schmidt has asked for is that we change the way that we assess him for, for his product. He makes a distinction in his proposed amendment between wet ton and dry ton weight that he would like to have a discount on the dry ton and that he not be assessed for wet ton. This is product that's either dry or wet. Dry is obviously lighter, more fluffy, and, and therefore he thinks that we should give consideration to the, to the dry product and charge him a lower price per, for dry ton. I guess the town's position is that we would like to see Mr. Schmidt be successful in his project. And I'm a little concerned that if we reopen the host community agreement now, it might, might stall him with the Cannabis Control Commission in Boston. Thinking that what we should do is allow Mr. Schmidt to exercise the host community agreement that he has in hand right now with respect to his obtaining state licenses and permits. And then when he starts to grow, we can commit to reopening the negotiations and addressing this particular point.
That's interesting. Just to sort of jump in real quick, I mean, that's kind of a good idea. I definitely don't want this to go away. I don't know of anybody who does. But I didn't also know that there's a potential impact to the process. So Damon, this is your deal and your world here. Can you, can you just comment on, on what you heard from David? As long as you did hear what David said there relative to the process potentially being affected by us, you know, reopening and adjusting things?
No, well, from my end, from licensing, it won't affect anything. So, I mean, I'm on your timeframe. It doesn't really matter to me as long as you guys agree to, you know, change that, you know, at some point. But I, I think it would be cleaner if we change it sooner rather than later. But yeah, for our licensing, it doesn't matter because we already have an agreement in place. So the CCC doesn't look at the host community agreements that we make. All they look at is that one pager that I turn in. So, I mean, from my licensing, it doesn't matter to me if we, you know, change it now or change it in a month. It doesn't matter for the Cannabis Control Commission. But I mean, I just need to get it changed. I mean, I hope you guys, I don't want to get into a situation where, you know, we're talking, you know, the difference between four and six thousand pounds times thirty dollars and thirty thousand to forty thousand, hopefully fifty thousand pounds. So if it was fifty thousand pounds, times that by thirty, that's one point five billion dollars. Or if it's, you know, thirty thousand pounds, that's nine hundred thousand. Kind of a big amount of money to be, you know, hanging in the wind. If you guys want to wait about weeks, it doesn't, you know, say licensing, you know, whether we change it next week or in a month. Thing that's, you know, hanging over us.
Yeah, I don't want you to feel like that. And you are cutting out a little bit. I mean, I think appropriately, you're sideways and cutting out, to be honest. But, but I, I don't, I know, in my view, I'm not looking to, you know, it makes sense to me. Like I'm a contractor too. So when stuff, you know, that sort of changes and makes it like, you know, the change in conditions because of something like this, I mean, it makes sense to me. So, but I am, I'm also in no rush. So, I don't know what you guys all think about just sort of pushing this off until a little bit later. Anyone want to discuss this at all? No?
I'm personally, I'm just, I feel the same way you do, but I'm leery at something else coming down the road and have, in terms of our agreement, I don't want to lose this either as far as the potential for the town. But in the same sense, I don't want to keep seeing changes having to be made and/or more compromises just to get this thing going. I'm a little leery of it.
Yeah, I mean, I think that's with all agreements, though. I, I feel like this is, we have plenty of time to consider any potential changes. So we've had some time to consider this one, and I think we're going to have a little bit more time to consider it too. Again, as I said, I'm not personally against it by any means. It just, you know, it doesn't feel like it needs to be rushed by us right now. And we make sure things are still moving forward and, and can deal with it a little bit later on. So, I don't know. I guess that's, that's sort of all I have to say on it. So if anyone has anything else they want to add or if a, a motion wants to be made, this is probably the, the time or, or, or we just push it off till, till later.
Yeah, can we set a date for later? So we have, you know, some sort of a wrap-up to this sometime, sometime in May?
Yeah, sure. Will you tell us? So what, no, 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 I don't mean it like that. So, I mean, you tell us about your process and where things are standing with the review of your license or whatever else. What are you expecting?
Oh, so from the licensing standpoint, I just need to, you know, finish my project. I need to finish the fence, finish the security, have all of that done. Then I call the Cannabis Control Commission. It's what's called the final review. They come in and basically it's, you know, to make sure that every square inch is under camera. They basically just check our standard operating procedures, all of our security, and then they reach out to the, you know, the town and make sure that we actually have a special permit or I provide them proof that we have a special permit. And then what happens is the investigators say, oh, okay, you're a hundred percent ready to go and we'll recommend you to the next month meeting. So it's really important for me to get all of what I just said done in May. So by the May twenty-seven, twenty-eight, they already recommend me to the June seventeenth meeting. If I don't make the June seventeenth meeting, the next meeting is July fifteenth. So I'm either trying to plant in June or July. And if anyone's, you know, planted tomatoes or anything around here, you know, it's better to plant early. So it's kind of, kind of where we are. So basically just hinges on, you know, me getting the special permit and that kind of, you know, puts everything in, in play with the CCC.
Sounds good. Well, it doesn't hurt us as a town then to, to keep this out there until May. So I think, right, okay. So I'm just looking to see when our, our meetings in May are. I don't know, Aaron, if you have that handy. But it looks like it might be the tenth and the twenty-fourth, although I don't know on Memorial Day. Is Memorial Day the twenty-fourth this year?
No, Memorial Day is at the end of the month. It would be the thirtieth or thirty-first. I'm not exactly sure which date that is. Originally, Damon had set up a time to have the community outreach for May tenth. I'm not sure if we're still proceeding with that at that point then. If we could get a decision on that as well for this evening or if, or if things are going to be pushed out a little bit more.
Yeah, we, I talked to Mallory. I actually was going to shoot an email when I got back in front of my computer, but we're going to cancel that. Just they, you know, we resolved that in terms of, I guess, the issue we had with the planning board and needing another license there.
All right, well, I guess I propose putting it on the tenth and then we can consider it further there. And for some reason, if something jumps in the way or things aren't proceeding as planned, that can always go to the twenty-fourth or our meeting after that as well. Anyone have any problem with, with us pushing that to, to May tenth and discuss it again?
Sounds okay with me.
All right, well, that's what we'll do. So we'll, we'll have you on the agenda then too. If you want to join us, please do. If there's anything else you want to bring up at that time, please do.
Thank you.
All right, thanks.
Sorry about the car.
It's all good. Okay, all right, so we've, we've acted.
We lost you, Dan.
Yeah, we lost Dad.
Yeah, I'm not sure where he went. Let's try this again.
He's back.
Yeah, I didn't do anything. Somebody, somebody cut me out.
That was probably me. I apologize.
So I'm just letting Pat know that he can come on back now. So I'll just wait two seconds before I move on with the next item, which is the Midstate Trail, Midstate Massive Ultra Trail Event, nine through ten, October two thousand twenty-one. So just, let's give Pat a second here to get back. All right, I see him coming back in now. All right, Pat, you hear us?
Yes, again.
Sounds good. Okay, so we're moving on to, to the, the discussion on the Midstate Trail and Midstate Massive Ultra Trail Event. And basically, you know, allowing this to, to some, to come along in town with, with Board of Health permission. Does anyone want to sort of let us know a little bit more details on this? David, is that you?
Nope.
Aaron, is that you?
It really actually isn't too much more than what this is. It's something that had, what the emails have said. It is something that normally occurs, I guess, through Hubbardston. I'm not too familiar with that. So what they've done is that they've just done a little bit different for more distancing as well as mask wearing. So that they really would like to have this event take place this year, but they obviously need to have the select board's approval to do this. They have presented to you in their two emails what they're actually requiring. They have a small video that's out there on YouTube. As you can see, this runner does have a mask on. So it is something that they would like to have, but obviously they need select board approval. And they just would like you to consider what they have proposed to you.
All right, sounds good. I'm all for it. So, I mean, unless you guys want to discuss it, we can, somebody make a motion as per the, the agenda.
I'll make the motion to move to allow Midstate Trail to hold their event October ninth and tenth, twenty twenty-one, following the guidelines they outline in with the Board of Health permission.
I'll second that.
It's seconded. Any discussion? Okay, we'll go to a vote. Dan, yes. Katie?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Pat?
Yes.
Jeff? I think you might be muted, Jeff. I think you're muted, Jeff. Muted, Jeff?
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can now.
Hey, because I can't see you guys. I got this screen of call a magic quadrant for meeting solutions I'm looking at. I, but yes, on the, the motion, but I, I don't know what's going on with the screen.
Okay. Okay, so the motion passes. I guess we're gonna carry on here, Jeff, okay?
Okay.
Okay. So the next item will be an update on the reopening plan, which was, which was presented to us last time by David. David, can you update us on that?
Certainly, the Board of Health has approved the reopening plan. They're now allowing face-to-face meetings with committees. The public still has to attend remotely. We were talking about the, the capacity of the town to, the town offices to handle the bandwidth that would be required to do that. Kate Young and I had some ideas having to do with using the large TV in the, in the meeting room. So we're going to try to put something together so that we can meet face-to-face and allow the public and allow the public to observe and participate via Zoom.
Okay, so we'll talk about, we'll put that on our agenda for next meeting to, to maybe take some action on, on a plan?
Yep.
Okay.
I would just like to add that the Board of Health, Mallory is speaking with the Board of Health members. They are going to come up with some type of wording that each committee and department will need to have and sign off on. So each department head will have to have all of their different people within that department understand the rules of what this is. And each department and board and committee would have to sign off on it prior to being able to meet. So it is something that they are working on getting the wording for and will present out there to everyone once they have that done.
Okay, sounds good. Thanks for that. Okay, well, thanks for the update. So the next item with old business is the, the Center School Roof Funding. We've, we've gotten to a great point finally and record time, I think. So a quick update here, David, if you could just let everybody else know the process that has gone through in, in a summary?
Oh, the, the governor signed into law, chapter twelve of the Acts of two thousand twenty one, which validates the election results from last June in the town of Hubbardston. So this is very good news indeed. The law takes effect immediately. We are funding information and certifications to bond counsel. One vote that the select board needs to take tonight is to approve that portion of the project, a two million dollar project, which is going to be supported half by the MSBA. We have to approve the borrowing of the remainder of one million three hundred twenty nine, twenty thousand five nineteen. There's a technical motion which is on the screen, which we have to read into the record.
The technical motion is, is the one that says, the one that's on the agenda? Or the one that's literally on the screen that we're looking at now that says voted with a colon next to it?
Voted with the colon.
Okay, Jeff, can you see this, Jeff, or is, can somebody?
Yes, I can see it.
Okay.
I move that we hereby determine in accordance with General Law's Chapter seventy B that a portion of the cost of the two million nine hundred sixty nine thousand seven hundred forty six dollars school roof repair bonds, Hubbardston Center School authorized by a vote of the town passed June twenty three, two thousand twenty, Article nineteen, and excluded from the limitations of Proposition Two and a Half, so called by a vote of the town passed June third, two thousand twenty. Question one, not being paid by the school facilities grant is one million three hundred twenty thousand five hundred nineteen dollars. And we hereby approve of the issuance of bonds or notes in the amount of one million three hundred twenty thousand five hundred ninety dollars under said General Law, Chapter seventy B.
Second.
If we could just clarify, that last number is one million three hundred twenty thousand five hundred nineteen dollars. Just to, for clarification for the record.
I believe I said that, but go ahead.
So you amend it if it's needed amendment. I can't remember what you said or not. You amend it to that, Jeff? Okay, is that a yes? I could, you're, you're. Okay, your signal's bad tonight, just so you know. And then Chris, your second, your second.
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, so there's a motion and, and a second. Is there any discussion? No, we will vote, roll call. Dan, yes? Katie?
Yeah.
Chris?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
And Pat?
Yes.
Okay, it is unanimous. Sounds good. Those people will be very, very happy because our owners, I mean, our architect and engineer have not been able to bill us yet and they're well over a hundred thousand dollars funding it themselves. So they, they ask us every single week and it's nice to have, have that option. So thank you, David, for, for pushing that through like you did. The next item will be the, the Town Administrators Report. So what do you got for us?
Okay, so let's see, the, we talked about the COVID nineteen, we talked about the annual town meeting. Short term projects, we talked about the Center School Roof, Vietnam Memorial. I think we've covered pretty much all of it. The playground project is moving forward. And the recreational field design is moving forward. Bits, bits are being solicited for the, to field design. The fencing is also moving forward with a bid that's due on this Thursday coming up. And that is about it. We've just been working on the budget and the warrant for pretty much past couple of days.
Okay, sounds good. Anyone have any questions for David on the town administrator report? Okay, I'm seeing none here. We'll move on to the policies to review, which I don't see any. The one after that would be board and committee updates. I, I don't have any on town center. Anyone else have any on, they want to share? No, no updates there. Next item matters not reasonably anticipated by the chair. I don't have any. Anyone else have any?
Yeah, I have, I have one. It's a reoccurring matter and it's the bandstand roof. Last time we spoke, I think we decided there was discrepancies between the funding needed to get the project done and what was advertised by David. I thought you said you'd look into that, David. Did you resolve that discrepancy and where do we stand on that project?
Yeah, so I reported to the select board that the available funds are fifteen thousand dollars and we got a quote in for eighteen thousand two fifty. If we decide to skip the optional cedar breather membrane over the existing skip sheeting for twenty five hundred dollars, that leaves the funding gap of only seven fifty. You asked me to double check those numbers and I did. We're still a gap of seven fifty, which we can cover. So I think we're in a place where we can move this project forward with the optional item taken out of the, of the project.
Right. The membrane underneath the roof. So what do we need to do to, what are the next steps then to get this rolling?
I can make that happen.
Okay, I appreciate it.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, any other additional items anyone wants to bring up? Okay, none. Any public or press questions and answers? Anybody? I don't see that we have any more attendees. They all left. Any other questions come up? Anyone has, David or Aaron?
Yes, we do have one public comment from Facebook. Let me just pull that up. It was a person, as you can see, I don't know if you can see, it's Meredith Leclaire. She's just questioning that in honor of Earth Day, she'd like to have some trash and recycle bins put back at the playground or at the Curtis Recreational Field. Something she's thinking that would be small so that it might limit people actually just dumping trash in there. She's a little bit upset with the amount of, of mess that is up there with it. And she would just like to see something there so that it's not a once a year type of thing. There was an additional comment from someone else on Facebook in response to her comment that just said that they believed that there used to be some type of facilities up there for the trash and recycling, but they're not exactly sure what happened or if it was a COVID issue as to why they disappeared.
All right, well, can you, can you make sure that Sando at the parks has seen that? And, you know, that's more of a sort of a parks thing, I think, for them to consider first off. And then we'll maybe go from there if Sando wants to take it further.
Sure, I will pass that along to her.
Okay. Okay, thanks. Any, any further on public press question answer?
That is all I had.
All right. Well, it sounds good. So we have an executive session that we have to get to quickly. It's relative to the minutes. I think that that motion is on, on there. If we want to proceed with that, we can, we can do that without, you know, the intention of coming back. I don't know, Jeff, if you can, if you can hear us, if you're still.
Yeah. So you want me to read the entire? Explanation, Aaron?
I kind of do, but your signal's so bad, I kind of don't.
Okay.
So I don't know if somebody else, somebody else could, could do that maybe just for, for clarity?
I'll, I'll make the motion that we move to executive session under open meeting law reason seven to comply with or act under the authority of any general or special law or federal grant and aid requirements. There may be provisions in the statutes and federal grants that require specifically allow a public body to consider a particular issue in a closed session. Before entering executive session under this purpose, the public body must cite the specific law or federal grant and aid requirement that necess, necess. Necessitates confidentiality. A public body may withhold that information only if publicly disclosing it would compromise the purpose for which the executive session was called. While we generally defer to public bodies' assessment of whether the inclusion of such details would compromise the purpose for an executive session, a public body must be able to demonstrate a reasonable basis for that claim of challenge. And we will not return. Is that right, Dan?
Good enough, yep.
I'll second that.
Okay, seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, we'll roll call, we'll vote. Dan, yes? Katie?
Yes.
Pat?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
And Jeff?
Yes.